Got it. Good evening and welcome to the November 28, 2022, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Craig Sturzoff.
Wesley, this is the file of the United States of America to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being recorded by our board. Is there anyone else recording the meeting? Austin? No, okay. Seeing none, let's start right off. First thing on the agenda is minutes. Pam, tell us about these minutes. I'm Bob Barker. You're talking about Hill behind door one. Yes. Well, February 22nd is fresh in my mind. How about you, Don?
I, that's why I was looking for them.
It was like it was yesterday, right? I did look them over today. Didn't see any real issues. Craig?
Can't remember when we were at for dinner last week, let alone minutes from last year. February is almost a year ago.
True. I mean, many things that may have been discussed at that time might have been changed by later events, but I think the minutes are an accurate reflection of what we discussed at that time.
Definitely stuff changed from here.
Right. But again, not that night.
Right.
Right.
Second.
On favor? Pam, did you find those minutes from 2017? No? Okay, well. Don, if you could reach out, thank you. No, thank you. All right. All right. Next, report animal control officer. I don't see.
That she was coming in on Zoom.
Is she iPhone?
No. Is she, is she iPhone?
She iPhone.
We don't know.
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Shelley?
Shelley? Yes. Hi.
All right, okay.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Shelley.
Hi, guys.
So Shelley has reached out. Obviously, there are some ongoing concerns with one of the locations on Raymond Drive. I'd asked her to come update the board, and then the board would decide if I want to direct the. So Shelley, you have the 400 floor.
Okay, we're talking about 56 Raymond Drive?
At this point, yes.
Okay, well, right at the moment, there hasn't been any issues since, probably for about a week now. And Larry, actually, the one that owns one of the dogs, is not, he has gone away from the house for probably about a week or so. And, but we haven't had any issues at all. And as far as the other one at 176 Raymond Drive, I went and checked out the fence at Bebo's, and he has secured the fence where it was loose. So hopefully the dogs will not get out of that fence.
All right, so one had a east fence and the other one had a fence they were digging under?
Yes.
Other important opportunity for someone in town. So at this point, do you have any issues, current issues with either location?
No. Nope.
Has, has there ever been any fines issued to either of these instances?
No, because just in the past, fines don't really do anything. They don't seem to pay them and then, yeah, and, and taking them to court is a long process, and it doesn't seem to solve the problem.
So would you not recommend in finding if the, if the occurrences happen again?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think they do any good. I don't recommend it. You know, I think coming in for the board is the best thing.
Okay. Doesn't know if we had to set a precedent because it's part of the, part of, I think it's part of the bylaws, isn't it?
Yeah, no, it is. It is.
Yeah, I don't know if we don't follow procedure, we can have any recourse.
I think it's important to be consistent. We pick it in one person.
Yeah.
Obviously, we all like to work towards a solution. The head owner, the neighbors are the priority of it. Okay, so at this point, the end of November, do we have any open urgent issue?
No, not right now. No.
Raccoons?
Yeah, no. No, they seem to be rehavin', too.
I just wonder if a letter needs to go out to the husky dog owner because he didn't come to any of the meetings that he was requested to come to. So should we send a letter to say, these have been reported, you are on notice if we hear any further infractions?
At this point, to show that we did start the process, and if he comes in, you're on meeting number two, not meeting number one.
Yeah, but didn't we decide to do that last time with him? You have to send him a letter?
Well, I think the letter should be sent to the whole family, to address the entire family, not just him.
The address itself.
Does, does he own one or both dogs, Shelley?
No, no, he owns one and his sister owns the other. So I, I think a letter should go to the entire family, not just him. Because honestly, he's, he's at work trying to work, and he sees his dogs out in the yard on the camera, getting in the front yard and stuff. And, you know, the rest of the family doesn't seem to want to cooperate with him.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, Tom, what?
I've passed out, yes, passed out sheets. There are three sheets. Town-funded projects, grant-funded projects, and ARPA-funded projects. First sheet is ARPA-funded. Just call your attention to a couple of items. Water Department pump and well repairs haven't gone forward because, talking with Craig this morning, there are some complications. You want to also?
Yeah, when we had the engineering study done on the wells at the pump house, the original thought was we could backflush the wells and figure out the sediment issue that may be causing some aeration in the water. After the engineering studies were done, they think that there's a, the ground well water has naturally occurring CO2, and it's not because the wells are built up with fines in the pumps themselves. So there needs to be a little bit more work done to see what the next course of action should be. And then the one that we originally thought was the proper way forward may not actually be the remedy for the solution, or remedy for the problem.
So if there's additional funding needed down the road, could you just come back?
Yeah. I, I missed the last meeting, so I can't say exactly, but from what I remember, I don't think it was going to go over the estimate, and if it was, it'd be right around that. We're still waiting to hear back, or at least I am still waiting to hear back on that estimate.
Okay, next item is the fire department generator. It was ordered in March of '22. It's not coming in until an estimated March of '23. That's getting close to the world we live in right now.
It's a pretty big general. This isn't, go to home people and picking up, this is, what was it, 60 AW or?
It was, yeah, I thought it was more closer to 100. Two other items, the SRO for Green Meadow School, I have June 22. I have to make that 23. And we've not paid out any money this year. So gotta work that out with the chief.
Kind of thinking, I mentioned, you know, obviously, he gets a weekly or bi-weekly paycheck. It might be more expeditious if we just did transfer this amount into the police department budget rather than going ahead and check out of our process. We've approved an extension out of our budget.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
They're probably not asking for that because money's still.
Right, right, right.
Or should we just wait and see if he's going to be under budget this year?
It could be too, but we could wait for that.
And lastly, on that first page.
Did you want the money on that right now?
No.
No, I'm good.
On that first page, I think I have misspelled excavator with an E-R, and as John pointed out, I think it should be an O-R.
Bob's taken the flab for that, but I really think Bob does it on purpose to see if we actually read this.
No, no, it's my slovenly Pennsylvania style of speaking. I've been trying all my life to be more articulate, but it, I fall back, you know? So anyway, right now, we, we have accounted for 855,000 in ARPA funds, leaving 659 remaining. And you, of course, know that we did get the last allocation.
On the ARPA funds, refresh my memory, did Wilderham vote for the network switches? Or did they vote against the network switches?
They did, and I talked to Nick Rowe today.
They voted against it?
No, they voted for it. He said, they're in the same situation. Those switches apparently have not purchased.
Okay, so that's still good.
Because they haven't spent their money either that they've allocated.
They're probably coming from the same place that Jim ran us.
On the grant-funded projects, if you drop down to the crosswalk on Summers Road, that may not be, the 23,300 may not be accurate. That project was just completed last week, and we'll wait till we get the bill for that. Also, on the Main Street sidewalk design and build, we have 1.3 million in the grant. So what I did was I took the design estimated at 183 and subtracted that from 1.3. So that 1.116 million takes into account the design cost.
I was concerned, you know, reimbursement on this, I think it's a great thing, even if we go ahead and give out the, the warmth of the design, when can we expect reimbursement from the state? I mean, the trucker from last year got.
Yeah, we're way behind, yeah.
So I think he's put some calls in.
I have a call into Senator Lesser's office, and.
Still answering that?
No, but I know someone, I called, I called his new chief of staff.
His personal cell phone?
I'm sure I'll get a call back. So also town hall windows, I've been going back and forth with the Tyon Bond consultant engineer. We're able to do the sidewalk because it's considered engineering. And as far as I'm, I consider, I considered it design initially, and so I was going to do an RFQ, which is required by the state bidding laws. He sent me an email, which is convincing that no, it's considered engineering because it's horizontal. Whereas, when we do the windows here, it's designed, which means I have to do an RFQ for the $540,000 project that we're going to be doing here with the state grant. So that's next on the list.
Because it's vertical?
Yes, literally, yes, yes.
You work for the state, Don. You're asking these questions.
32B and Chapter 149 are, it's a thick.
I know they said that. Were you going to get clarification just to confirm?
Yes.
All right.
A community compact grant, we haven't gotten started with that yet, but we're going to be partnering with South Hadley. I've said, we've set up a meeting for Wednesday. Hope Craig can sit in on that. It's going to be a Zoom call.
A quick question. Back to the Police Bridge Academy. That expenditure there, are you going to try and get that from the 400,000 or the over on that? Or shouldn't they?
No.
When does that go in here?
I'm going to, I'm going to put in for.
No, no, no. We have the current company.
Yes.
Which was, I show here, 48, 25 plus the radar.
Yes.
60 something. Very close to the Bridge Academy. Can we use up the rest of the first hundred for the Bridge Academy?
Yes, we can. And I'm going to put in for gaming commission money. They have a new cap, yeah, new category this year to make up whatever else we need.
Okay, the first 100,000, we get reimb, that was a not exceed. As we get a bill, they send us reimbursement.
Right, yes, correct.
We've been reimbursed on digital radar devices.
Correct, yes, correct.
Yeah, how about the other, we could show.
I haven't been reimbursed yet for the Summers Road project, crosswalk and the lighting.
It says one, eight, we're confused about which is, which is picture.
One.
Safety lighting on some of the crosswalks.
Yes. Safety lighting went up a couple of weeks ago.
Weeped before, though.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, and the, the crosswalk was just put up and completed last Wednesday or Thursday.
Sidewalks leading to it.
Yes, right.
So it shows, so both those projects are going against gaming commission money.
Yes.
Which we haven't got.
We have, we have the 23, or the digital radar device.
Right, but not the other 40.
Not the other, no. And then the last page are town-funded projects. I've got garage design and garage construction, and I think the project is there. I think it's done.
I got an email from Mark today, fans being, last name, Chris Winter. The fire station of the Pumas. I do note that, I think, Frank, you mentioned last week, you were able to utilize the garage for the, the health.
The border health trailer.
Yeah.
Yeah. It goes cold in there, but.
So those are, I mean, our three.
We had sweaters, yeah.
Our three town-funded projects are the highway garage expansion, the senior center expansion, and the fire station design and expansion. Obviously, the cost estimates there are estimates, so.
There was going to be a senior center design committee meeting today. The, wasn't properly noticed, so that's.
Those canceled. That could cancel it. So that's where we are. It's on the OneDrive if you don't want to keep the paper. And I have a, on the OneDrive, I've set up a folder just called ARPA, and it's town and, town and ARPA funds. It's, it's the file at the very top of the folder.
Any questions about that? Document Management Shared Service, is that something you've been looking into?
Correct. We got a $75,000 grant under the Community Compact IT program. It's always better, and you're always guaranteed to get the money if you can share a service with another community. So I checked around the region. The only community that was really interested was South Hadley. They've done this in Hampshire County. Five communities have gone together with a shared service, IT, a document management service like this. And so I know it works. Town of Hampton will host the new server for this.
Will it be a server or is it going to be cloud management? It says cloud here. So are we going to have a server?
Well, I'm sorry. That's what you have to decide. I sent you those two documents.
Yeah.
The two costs. One would be cloud storage. The other would be, we would, we would have the server.
Okay.
I don't think you have to decide now, but we haven't had, I mean, this grant was cleared about 10 days ago. We haven't had our first meeting yet, but I mean, that's the decision for the Board of Selectmen.
So this is, the license is, does this also include the machine?
It'll include the machine.
The price is here? These two quotes that you gave us here, would this include the scanning device?
Correct.
So.
And also, I put some money in there in order to get older documents into the system.
Yeah.
Put some money in there to hire someone who will go office to office.
So here's my, here's my question now. This high one, the $46,000 one, we have a $75,000 grant.
No.
Is this 46,000 total or for both communities? Each, each is going to have to come up with the same one?
Both of us.
So combined 46,000?
So why don't you need the user software if we have the cloud?
Why do you need it?
Why don't? I mean, show us.
I, you, you do. I mean, you, you would have, if you had cloud storage, you'd have an icon on your desk.
But I mean, the first part there, the base software, I don't understand why it's not in there for both. The fourth part, whether it's in a physical server.
This must be computers. It must have an individual license per computer.
But you still need them.
None of you have. But if you have a cloud, you probably have a central log-on. Not, so you could create, on the cloud, you could create multiple users under the cloud and not have anything different. But as far as individual computers, individual clients, each one is going to need a license. This one's going to need a license. That one's going to need a license to run the software.
And then if I need to see them, I'm using their software come down to my computer to see if I'm in the cloud.
But you're, you're paying for the client license, individual license. When you're doing the cloud, you're not.
But you're still going to have an icon on your desktop to, to get to your files.
Correct.
Yeah, but.
Whether it's in the cloud or whether it's locally stored.
Yeah, that's, that's, I had the same question. Jenna, I don't, I don't understand why.
Right.
This is such, this is shocking.
It's a huge difference.
Yeah.
And if we go with the more expensive one, I don't think we'll have enough money to hire somebody to do the project.
Then you need, then, but, but also according to this, this one here, you need an IT person on site.
Yeah, training.
46,000 one. I don't understand it.
It seems too good to be true.
The cloud one looks.
Not enough software at the office to not.
But then there's also a yearly expense, too.
Yeah.
One's 5,000, one's 62. So the 75,000 is for both us and South Hadley, right? We're going to get the money, and South Hadley is going to, what are they going to do?
They will be connected to the system now. But as far as the technology of connection, something that I, I have to learn.
If there's only one scanner, and it's here, it's not terribly convenient for stuff.
Probably going to have to buy two scanners. They're not expensive, by the way.
But they buy, I'm sorry, if you buy two scanners, I go together.
I don't see a scanner on the cloud rate version, though.
Because of the storage.
They don't, they don't provide the scanners. You got to buy them separately. That's what they told me on the phone.
Oh, so these don't include scanners?
No.
Oh, yeah, that was my question. So how much are the scanners then?
Well, the ones that I looked at were in the range of 8,000 or 9,000. Oh, it's, it's professional grade. It'd be on a cart that you could push it around various offices.
Let, let me backtrack a little bit. So this company here just provides us either software or cloud storage. What's stopping us from doing it differently? Just buying the scanner and utilizing our own internal network to store on our server currently? Yeah.
The, well, the critical function, though, is to have someone trained when they, they do the scanning, will, will do the right categories.
That's insane. You've got to be able to find it. Once you put on books in the library, you don't know who's testing going back out again. What, did they have, you may have said this before, did they have a local customer that we can talk to and see?
Long Meadow. They are in the process. But no, no, they're in the process. They're have, they haven't implemented yet, but they are in, in the process of implementing.
With this company?
With that company.
So any current customers that have actually used that?
Yeah, by the way, they're, I actually called and asked them to send over a copy of their estimate. It's on the OneDrive.
So I think we're all a little skeptical or confused. Is there any way we can get this, somebody, have them present to us exactly what service they provide and how it would benefit us?
Yeah, I mean, this was.
At our meeting, not a staff meeting.
Right.
Yeah, one of our selectmen meetings.
Well, I think that's clearly the next step, and there's a lot of training involved as well.
I just want to make sure that before we invest either this money or this money, that we know that this is going to be sufficient for both communities that are using it.
Hmm, easy. And there are other companies that provide the same service.
Right.
Microfish is just the best known.
I do say sometimes they leave something out. My father ordered a truck and sheriff and told him he needed it at the Hall of Trail. Got the truck, there was no bumper. Oh, you didn't tell us you needed a bumper?
That was back in the days when bumpers were additional. That, that was the real thing, yeah.
But again, same thing. He said, I told you what I wanted.
It was an accessory add on the rear bumper.
The way this happened.
We're way off topic now.
But the way this happened, the Community Compact program allows you to do two grants every other year. So we already got our grant for the fiber optic system, and I couldn't apply for an IT grant because it didn't open until September of this year. So I got, we got the fiber last year. So it was kind of frustrating. I had to wait a whole of the cycle. At one point, I just called up the state office and said, I always wanted to do this. What can you suggest? They said, apply. I said, well, you know, you can do it, even though it's not in accordance with our rules. So I did. And so.
Hampshire thing. Remember Hampshire, like council or?
Government, yeah.
Ken Elstein, maybe? Name, where are you? Ken Elstein came down, selecting it there and presented to us. And that was back when they wanted to get some power sharing. That's something they go around doing?
I don't know. We have a long way to go for this, but I wanted to get the grant in, during the window.
First part's done.
Get the money and then figure out what, what's the best option for us.
That goes back to the other question. When is the money? You know, Don is not famous for saying, like the movie.
Do we get the money?
Show me the money. Show me the money.
We've gotten the money so far on all the grants, except, you know, except the two that are in the bond package.
Yeah.
Packages. So, I mean, I have, we have a contract, which I've signed, gave it to Pam. It's been sent back. So we are, we have a state contract for this money.
Boston would never leave us hanging, would they?
No.
Boston? I said, would Boston never leave us hanging for money?
Of course not.
Yeah. No, no. All right.
Work to do.
I'm going to get a contract proposal from Tyon Bond in the coming week. I have a conversation with them. I said, what I have from you is this email, which I distributed, where you, you estimate 150 to 200. Said, you know, you got to give me a contract, which I can take to the selectmen for their approval. So they're going to do that, and I should, probably have it. I put 183 in there. They told me it's going to go a little higher because we've asked them to design on the north side of Main Street.
Well, I don't think, my concern was the, the north side was a fairness for the residents.
Yeah.
That we're putting in a nice new sidewalk to the south side, and north side people like. So the other concern I have is reading through the quote is the, and I think, Don, you might have said this before, the part between the VFW and the corner of the bonds. Obviously, we know it's next to the river. Is there going to be some ANCOM work, DEEP work, you know, possibly Army Corps of Engineers? And you're talking permitting that could add two, three months as well as coming in. However, I would say, and I think I mentioned to you this before, it's a great opportunity there. Say you have a walkway much like you have in Springfield. A lot of the thing, maybe.
Look out.
Black, fundamental, like, you know.
Yeah, yeah, like the Riverwalk stuff.
That type of thing, I think, in that area there. It could be, it could be quite nice.
It could be.
Is this?
In a conversation that I had, I said, what I want you to do is to provide the service and oversee the project. They said, we will do the engineering or design. We will go out to bid for you. We will help you choose a company to do the construction. We will oversee the construction, just as they did for the water project that we did.
Obviously, a concern.
For our price, but I mean.
Mark to look into it, just shopping it around. We've seen concrete price go up.
Yeah.
We've seen, just like everything else, those over the past years, where the estimate might go up. That's why I said, eight, that's the square foot is at the north side.
So this north side is.
Not on there.
Well, that's the 150 to 200 here?
That's the 150 to 200.
So that, that could put us over the budget.
It could, but we don't know yet.
But we can't put an RFQ together unless we know we're doing.
Well, we can act as alternate.
Yeah, yeah, like we did, like we did on the garage, the highway garage.
Now, you said we are forced to do the, the ADA part on the old side because we're replacing. We have to do four feet.
We do.
We do.
What I like to be able to do, I think what makes the most sense, is to include the cost of a skid steer so that the highway department can brush the snow off the sidewalk in the winter time. Because, I mean, the other option there is to require property owners to shovel, and I think that's a tough sell, probably.
It's the current situation. I owned on Main Street, and I bought there, so that's the way it is. You have, I would say, twenty-four hours to do the sidewalk in front of your house. And Sarah, you're nodding because I'm shocked it's not what you were told in Springfield.
Oh, absolutely. But there's, there's a.
I'm sure there's a few that.
There's a deeply ingrained culture that you have to do it. If it's something you're not accustomed to doing, and suddenly somebody says, you gotta go out and shovel your sidewalk.
Well, they must shovel their sidewalk, the old sidewalk up until, they must do that now.
Well, there's no difference.
There's only three extra houses that don't have a sidewalk. The one at the end of, uh, is it? There's Bonds, and there's the guy in, uh, there's only three additional houses that are getting sidewalks. The rest of them are businesses. And knowing most of those people, Tom Pelletier, the NFW, they're gonna take pride and make sure it's done.
That's the best way.
Yeah, I don't really see a problem. And they're probably gonna appreciate the fact that it's nice, flat, and easier to clean. Rather than, it's a little dippy after a few years of sun.
If down the road, you decide to do the Summers Road project, however, I think that's a tougher, that's a tougher situation for shoveling.
What do we all say, Don, that we're looking at that before? You actually have.
Four, five houses, that's all. And again, and then you get, and then again, you have the wetland problem there, that little section there.
These kids can be fishing off that.
Well, I should, the bottom line here is that you should have a contract to mull over. At a good time, this week. And if you object to it, you can.
We need a mull over for.
Look around.
I do think it's prudent for both Ty and Bond and Mark, I would super-denote, take a look at current pricing and future pricing, cement, just to get a sense that the estimates are still fairly accurate.
And I should have a response from Senator Lesser's office. I'm sure other communities in the state that were into big bond package are trying to light the fire under the state as well to get, get the money out.
Everybody wants to start doing their twenty-twenty-three projects, so they gotta get them rolling now.
Yeah, they wanna get them done this year.
First we mailed all the money back to you. Did you get the first one, or?
I did. Well, if you paid your taxes, you would've got something back.
Come on. Yep.
You have to file, you know, get it back.
Well, listen to sidebar we're talking about now. Sir, can we go up to the microphone?
Does he wanna be talking about the Main Street, or?
Main Street one or the Allen? We just finished Main Street. We're gonna talk about the Allen Street one now.
Which one do you wanna talk about?
Well, let me start, and then I'll come back with Allen Street. I try and follow what's going on. I haven't got the foggiest idea what the hell's going on with sidewalks. Part of it, I probably did if I started watching you guys on television. It makes you look fat. You don't wanna do that.
Austin, you're so glad we didn't have it back in your day, right? You got it, you got it.
Beats all over. But I have no understanding of the scope and the number of sidewalks that you're planning. So I'd like to hear an overview of what your plans are in every section. I went to detail on the Allen Street. And just to say one thing, you're talking about citing people for not cleaning their sidewalks?
We're not.
No.
Good, because this has been going off for twenty years. And I remember you at a meeting when you lived across the street saying you had sidewalks and you'd never shovel. I didn't say that. Yes, you did. I may not know what I had for breakfast, but I remember that one.
If you knew my dad, my grandfather, you know I would never, never let me say that. They bought me two shovels and made sure I got it done. So the quick overview, Austin, is that we've been talking about different sidewalk projects, and I drew up, hey, how about completing the sidewalk from White, from the end of Main Street where it ends, you know, just past White Birch, on the south side to Village Food Mart. And that's been talked about for a couple of years. Bob went out and actually got a bond from, actually a grant, if you will, from the state to not only complete it in cement, but upgrade the existing sidewalk from here to there, so the complete sidewalk would be cemented. That's the south side from right across the street all the way to Village Food Mart. So we replaced the blacktop over there with a new cement, like you've seen in Long Meadow, East Meadow, whatever. And the question I have right now is, hey, can we see if there's enough money in that as well to do this side? Which wasn't brought up before, but I think as a fairness thing, you know, residents on both sides, hey, how come we didn't get a new one as well? Which is only not expanding the one on the side, just replacing the blacktop down to the park. Correct. We're up for Allen Street now. So the Allen Street project was something that's been kicked around for a few years. Is there interest? Sure. So is there interest in doing that? You know, it's been on and off, as you said, for a number of years. So we've looked at a couple of different routes. We actually did a walk with Ty and Bond from the senior center down to the intersection. We were fortunate that the gaming commission money that we got from our twenty-fourteen appearance in Boston finally came in and paid for the crosswalk part of it. So that, upgrading the crosswalk at Centennial Comics, that part's done. Now we have a proposal to, we have two routes to look at, if you will, the western route and the eastern route. And I think, if I speak for the board, the board is leaning towards the eastern route, the backside. Right? Because it doesn't involve crossing at the senior center. Which logically would make no sense. Why would you have them cross at the busiest part of Allen Street? So that's what we're looking at now. Does it end there? I would say personally, no. Why don't we look at Raymond Drive? Why don't we look at completing the loop around Wolverham Road? Now people have this nice walking trail, if you will, right there. But again, this is money.
I think, I think you may know I've had some experience walking around town. Seven to fifteen miles a day. All around, every inch of this town. Parts of Summers, Stafford, East Long Meadow, and a bit of Wolverham. Not a damn sidewalk in sight. I'm, I'm still here. And so I think I've got a little bit of experience, and you may have some too, because you realize in the charter, by charter, order selectmen is required to walk, walk the entire border of the town every year.
Ramblay, that was the word, right?
Every year, you're supposed to walk the entire border of the town. So you'll get some experience in walking in the roads before you put in the sidewalks. Now, I still am perplexed about who is supposed to be using these sidewalks. If you can't answer that, then there's no point to the step two. So who's using these sidewalks?
Oh, I'll, I'll speak first to the board. I go down Main Street quite a bit. I see an awful lot of people using the current sidewalk system we have on Main Street. I do. And I think I see a lot of people walking in between White Birch down to the St. Mary's Corner, if you will. And I'd like those people in a safe part. I think there's quite a bit of usage on Main Street.
I'm not, I'm not discussing Main Street. I'm talking with Allen Street.
Well, you were asking about sidewalks in general.
So I, so I live on, on Oak Knoll, and, you know, I go down Allen Street all the time, back and forth. And there isn't a day that goes by that there isn't one or two or five people walking in the road. You know? Kids, sometimes kids, sometimes, sometimes senior citizens, sometimes, sometimes, you know.
Seen them walking two by.
Two by two with the road, you know. The kids when they get out of school, sometimes.
One to five people a day, and that's more than I see. And I have to get down that street anytime I go anyplace in Massachusetts because I live on the other side of Summer Trail.
One thing about our town is.
I've been doing it for a long time, and I still haven't seen it. I haven't seen it increasing. I see more people walking on North Road than I do on Allen Street.
There was a bunch of people there, too.
So if you're going for priorities on usage, you're missed by about two miles.
There are some other.
I've talked to people.
The other thing is who are these people that are doing it? That are going, why did you pick the senior center? How are they gonna get there? How are they gonna get to this sidewalk? There's only about a half a dozen houses between the senior center and that, Silverham Road. So how are they gonna get on the sidewalk?
I've talked to a few people, Austin, from people that actually live on Raymond Drive, some seniors in town that go to the senior center, as well as people that attend Mountain View Restaurant, and people that come to the park. They have all said that they would utilize the sidewalk with, interconnecting with that business district, walking to, say, Village Mart, coming back down over to Mountain View, or continue walking from even the park, they would go down to Main Street, go to Mountain View, come back. There's a lot of people in the area that I know would use it.
You say a lot. There's five thousand people in this town, and you're changing the culture of the town.
I don't know if that's necessarily changing the culture of the town, Austin.
If these people wanted sidewalks, every town around us has sidewalks. We were not sitting here for all these years waiting for them to come in and design the drapes. So you better give it a hell of a lot more consideration than you seem to be, and a lot more reality than what you're telling.
And I, I think.
And if you're talking about people coming into the senior center, they're using it to go get some exercise or to walk up.
Yeah.
You're also, at the same time, looking at expansion for the senior center, correct? So you've already got an oversubscribed building, much of it, assume you're looking at, and a parking lot that's already oversubscribed parts of the day. So now you're gonna add more parking so people can use the sidewalk. So not only increasing the size of the building, you're gonna have to increase the size of the parking.
You're actually using an opportunity for.
Let me, there's a, there's a part two to that, because you can do it from the other end, at the stores. The stores can walk down and walk back. How many other businesses in there have you surveyed to find out how they would like to have more people parking in their parking lots, oversubscribed any day you get down there, for their customers to go shop or walk someplace else and not shop in their stores? And so before you start making these decisions, I'd like to hear that you've addressed all of those concerns and the concrete, visible matter of people that live here in the town. And I haven't heard a word about it. And, you know, if you've made up your mind, and I'm not sure why you even bother with meetings, but you know, I don't know if anybody's watching this thing. I'm not paying attention to it. But I think you owe the county and the people some concrete answers based on some kind of research. And finally, the survey you put on your website and on the Facebook page. I'm not big on surveys because who knows who's answering. But the hell of it, I did it the other day. And I clicked it, and I clicked it. As soon as I submitted it, it came back with a response, would you like to send another one? How many of those are legitimate? You can't trust a goddamn thing out of it. Excuse my French, but our meetings were better. The other thing is, you have no idea who the people are. They're answering the survey. Somebody up on Thresher, somebody up on North Munson, somebody at the other on a Stonely Hand. They have no way of getting to the thing unless they park their cars someplace else. Yet you're giving that weight, the same weight that you give somebody that lives on Allen Street. So to use a survey is defective as that. Well, I'm, I'm gonna clean up my language.
Austin, I can just respond. One thing about the senior center, they do have a walking club there, and I've been told they think rather than just keep circling the parking lot with their walking, they appreciate the opportunity to see some new, something new.
And I, and I agree. What I'm saying is not, not do it. What I'm saying is where you're doing it and how you're doing it. I don't care if you put a track in at the parking wreck. You're gonna have a sidewalk walking down there. You got a big baseball field. Put around it. You've got a big baseball field sitting over at Thornton Burgess. Get over there and give a little size eight to the school committee and say, you wanna use the school? It's a health court. Put a track around that. You've got other options, but putting sidewalks and then putting an obligation on the entire town for something that very few people are gonna use.
You say obligation.
Doesn't make any sense to me.
What do you mean by obligation?
Well, let me just ask you with it. Are you less concerned about the Main Street one than you are on the Allen Street one?
I, yeah, the Main Street one makes more sense. There's more traffic on it. There's more activity to it. To not connect the the library.
Finish, to finish the job makes more sense.
The government, Academy Hall, the, well, not the. But, you know, it, it makes more sense since it's already there and it is used.
And it's free. And it's free.
Well, I don't feel an obligation to spend taxpayers' money just because it's there.
We're not.
I'd rather have something useful.
Just for clarification, when you said, you keep mentioning obligation, none of this is being funded by tax-based dollars?
You think, who, who's got the printing machine?
It's grant-funded.
It's grant-funded?
Yeah.
When you hear the word grant, it equals behavior modification. Nobody is giving you money unless you're changing something that you're doing now. Whether you want to or not, that's what they're buying. That's exactly what grant money is.
So there, there's.
And grant money does not come out of the cloud. Every time you put out your mass income tax, you're funding a grant.
So just, just to counter that, and if, if you don't mind.
No, please do.
The, the sidewalk project on Main Street and the one that we were discussing on Allen Street, neither of it will affect Town of Hampden's tax base. None of the money is coming from taxes.
It's our income taxes.
Whether, whether we apply for the grant, if the money is in the state, somebody else is gonna apply for it.
I don't really care. It doesn't have to change my life.
My, my point with that is, hold on, one second, please. The point with that is, you say we're gonna pay for it out of our taxes, and we're going to. Why can't we benefit because we're gonna pay for it either way? Whether, whether we pay for it, or the grant's there and somebody else takes it, we're paying for it.
What I'm saying is, when you're talking about the benefit, the benefit that you're proposing now is not the best alternative benefit. That's my opinion on it. And I've tried to offer you some.
And I appreciate your opinion. I value that.
Go ahead and build sidewalks if someplace, but I don't think we need them. And these people that came here and all of a sudden decide they wanted to live in Hampden and got here after they bought the house, first thing they do is get down to the town clerk's office and ask them how to get their water turned on. And then, you know, they figure everything that's down here is a fixer-upper. Why they moved here with such a fixer-upper, I have no idea. And they don't seem to have a great deal of consideration of what was here before. And so a little respect and a little consideration, there's five thousand people in here. The Starry, you know, Starry grabs just don't do it for everybody. And I don't think you guys have met your obligation to thoroughly explore and explain to the people more than anything. Explain and divide, and obtain some kind of support for what you wanna do.
Fair enough.
A couple of quick points here.
No, please do.
Okay. I'd say, and I can't think of more, I think we're pretty locked in on going ahead with Main Street. You sound like you're not a person that.
On that matter.
We have not determined to go. We have not determined to go ahead with the Allen Street here at all. Secondly, we make a point about grants, and you and I have both had bad experiences with grants because sometimes we don't know what's behind the door. Oh, the grant required you to this. This unfortunately is not, it's an appropriation, the Main Street thing. It's an appropriation that, as far as we can tell, here's a check to the town. It doesn't mean that you must hire this guy, you must hire that guy. So it's not one of the, well, the bad grants we have. Thirdly, you recall this because you've been involved. The town, back in its, the subdivision control laws, had, um, requirements to put sidewalks into subdivisions. And remember when I came on the board, we started that thing, and I think you might have been selecting at the time, an option for the developer to put the money into something else, because the people, as you said, in the subdivision, didn't want a sidewalk. And real, we really didn't want a sidewalk that started nowhere and ended nowhere.
What?
That was, it gets back to understanding what people want. But what they wanted was a sidewalk that, you know, busier, more travel, build it where they are, not where you want them.
Well, you know, it's field that dreams, build it and they will come, just doesn't work. When you're talking about 5,000 people with diverse interests and various, uh, living styles away from the town, from this part of the town, you haven't solved the parking problem. You know, the busiest time going across Main Street was when Thornton Burgess lent out. There'd be 50, 60 kids charging across Main Street to get over to Snappy's every afternoon. It was a wonderful sight.
Dating yourself there with those terms.
Well, you're, you're lucky I have to stand because I'm old, I can't do this forever.
Austin, I think, you know, your points are well taken. We really appreciate you bringing them up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nice talking to me.
Thanks, Austin.
And if you really enjoyed it, you can watch it on video tomorrow. You'll really get yourself. Thank you.
Good night, Austin. Thank you.
Any more on the, uh, so obviously we need a little more thought, a little more research on the Allen Street. And, uh, Bob, your thoughts, I mean, Austin made some good points about the survey, not that we didn't have ourselves.
I agree. Uh, as I explained, uh, I think I only mentioned it to John, uh, to use Survey Monkey. They wanted, uh, I think it was $25 or $29 a month. So I did it on the cheap and used a Microsoft system. The only option that we had was you could have a form that people could fill out as they cast their vote. I didn't add that in because I thought there are, there are some people who might have an opinion, but if they have to tell us who they are and where they live, which is what was on that form, they might be reluctant to do that.
Right, but I think you're right, you know, the opportunity, as he said, and for $400, which you mentioned we'd have to pay an annual cost,
Yeah.
it's cheap money to get good data. Uh, maybe we should.
Yeah, there's, there's no track, we just, we just need trackable data, name and email address for sure, just to validate.
You could have 150 clicks from the company that sells cement going.
Yeah, we want more clicks. If, uh, you know, if you want to continue doing surveys.
And we don't have a license for a year, right?
And, and you, you want me to get a license, I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, we might, we might wanna do it, because we got issues with the senior center, the fire department and stuff, you know.
Right, I'll do it. I mean, it's.
And there you go. Let, um, let your chap at Tecton know that we have that, because that may be something he wanna throw into his public outreach part. The, the user survey.
Of course, they use it with the fiber project down the road too.
Yeah, that's right, too.
And survey which section, would you be willing to?
I mean, the other, I mean, there are significant biases built into this kind of survey. You've got the people who are technologically savvy, they tend to be younger rather than older, and, uh, you're gonna miss a significant segment of the population who don't visit our website. Even though, you know, the most recent count, 347 people have gone there.
347 clicks.
Clicks, yes.
Not people.
So, I mean, there might be some people who are just so determined.
Like Austin said, he clicked it twice.
That'd be admitted to.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
What if we use the scribe? You might get.
You could use the scribe, yeah, senior center.
Try that before. Remember, try that with the fire department thing, and, yeah. Obviously, the other concern is that maybe not everybody is online.
Why, I know they're not. The whole business of you building, they will come, uh, usually doesn't work. But I have seen it personally in several communities where there was resistance to building a sidewalk. Culturally, I mean, like, like he said, you're changing our town. I mean, I think that's probably the core of resistance, that you're doing something to urbanize the town, make it more like a city, less like a country town.
I mean, uh, the, the whole point of changing the town, did people say that when they widened Main Street back in the 50s?
But what I, what I have seen, and, and there's a striking example of it, uh, on Route 114. Uh, it's a state highway, the state decided to build a sidewalk. It was massive resistance to it. I, you know, I got punished by residents calling, why are you doing this? Why are you spending our tax money? We couldn't answer enough telephone calls to say, we're not doing it. Once they built it, it's almost crowded with people now walking. And so my, my sense is that, uh, if it's there, given the times and given people being more concerned about their health and doing more exercise, it's going to be used.
I have to say, I, I kind of do agree with Austin though. I don't think the vast majority of people are not gonna have a problem with Main Street. Like you say, we're talking about the one, the big part of it is already there, we're upgrading.
Right.
The other part, we lost, we're gone by three additional homes.
Yeah. No, I, I agree. I mean, maybe, maybe the sensible thing is to do Main Street and then wait and see what the reaction is, and then make a decision for, for Summers Road.
The decision on Allen Street was, the casino mitigation fund is there.
Yeah.
If we put in for it and don't use it, we don't get it. If we don't put in for it, we'd never get it. If we put in for it and choose to use it, we get it. So.
The other thing about putting in for it, they, the timeline that they establish is fairly flexible.
Right.
Now, what, the money that we currently have, the 100,000 minus these projects, we don't have to spend that until December of, the end of December of '23.
Right, so we have time to use it, and if we don't, can we just give it back?
Give it back.
Well, the other possible use for it, we don't know this yet, but say, what we're talking about with the north side of Main Street does come back with a number.
Yeah.
This is part of the casino route. Yeah, it'd be appropriate to.
We could ask for one.
Retool, no, retool the 300, or it's the North Street part. The other thing is that this is not, that's strictly a one-time only. I mean, that secondary mitigation money is supposed to be allocated.
Yes.
Maybe not annually, but every so often.
Yes.
As long as you keep going there, betting on red, Bob, we get money.
Yeah, I know. I didn't lose it. No, I think, I think you're absolutely right, that this money's going to be there for a while. They have an incentive to dole it out to the cities and towns, because they wanna keep that fund. Um, and I was told point-blank on the phone, if we don't use it, we're concerned that the legislature's gonna scoop it. So they wanna use the money that they're getting. The casinos are doing, I guess, relatively well, so the money's flowing in. And I think it makes sense to do one, and then, rather than doing both simultaneously, but get the money for the other one.
That's my point.
And if, yeah, and if we don't, we don't use the money, fine.
Well, like, like Bob's saying, we don't need to actually complete the second project. We just apply for the funding, and that's gonna take some time while the state is looking to get rid of it before they decide that the legislature wants to take it.
And the state is, the state is traditionally kind of liberal about requiring you to spend within a certain timeline. Remember, well, the 100,000 we have now was allocated by the state around, what, 2016 or '17? Uh, I just got, over the weekend, right before the weekend, uh, a request from the state to, uh, justify the $100,000 we got for the trees. So, I mean, there was, the pressure is not on, uh, to spend the money that they allocate. And so I did comply with that today. I gave them the information about what we used their $100,000, that earmark for, uh, removal of the dead trees. So I think, you know, having the money on hand, uh, just. And the round, by the way, if you change your mind, the next round doesn't start until January, so.
So, uh, next week we have the Say the Union Department meeting. But is the board ready to get the go-ahead for Bob to enter into my separate, my box? So let's try and lock that in for next week's agenda, that we can sign a contract and get, get that out of the box.
I was told today that they'll have the contract to me.
Okay, I'm concerned about the wetland part of it, that that's gonna add a couple of months. It's not so much that hard. One-day permit for the fundraising.
A folder, one of many.
We have a request for one-day permit for the sale of wine, eight and sip, Friday, December 9th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the senior. Eight and sip fundraiser, so.
I guzzled. Sit.
No, it's the Bob Ross tree.
Are you signing up?
Second.
Okay. The, uh, first one.
Getting that list here. All favor? One more. Uh, swimming pool permits. All water pool? No.
Okay, I'll go through it quickly. We have, um, already discussed some of the items. Just so the public is reminded, there will be a community meeting on January the 17th with our consultant at Tecton, uh, having to do with the proposal to expand the fire department. Uh, town manager administrator meeting on December the 9th. Sidewalk survey, we've already talked about its limits, but there were 347 responses, 203 in favor, 144 against. The new crosswalk and safety lights are installed on Summers Road. This was the project we just mentioned, funded by Gaming Commission funds. Uh, it's complete. Uh, the master plan update, the master plan committee is going to move forward. We did receive, I think the selectmen have a copy of their planning board's, uh, proposal to add ex officio members from various town boards and committees. I read that out at the staff meeting last week. Academy Hall Key still working. Uh, also, we have some expenses in the PD, sergeant exam, fitness for duty exam, those are the costs. Uh, and the agreement that we mentioned, uh, is being prepared by town council. Okay, we've talked about the IT grant. The first meeting is a Zoom call on the 30th. The Hamden Retirement Board, uh, has been cited by the Attorney General for violating the open meeting law. Got that notice from the Attorney General recently. Um, the website upgrade, for those who are handicapped, we are trying to upgrade our website to make it more accessible for people with disabilities. Um, we are, um, I've signed the, the agreement to add so-called AudioEye, which is a specialized software to enable people with disabilities to use the website effectively. We've also added some, a tab on the website, and we've added, uh, some, uh, uh, documents uh, relative to the Americans with Disabilities Act. I did attend the meeting, uh, for ERCS and Hank Hamden and the director, I think, got, got confused. Yeah. I, I was frankly stood up. I, I went over there to East Long Meadow, to the offices, and the director wasn't there. Um, and I, I stayed there for better part of 20 or 25 minutes because one of the employees in one of those offices was a friend, and I just stood there and talked for a while. Didn't show up, so I think it's gonna be rescheduled. HAM, well, we ought to eliminate the P because people, everybody says Hamden anyway, so why, uh, why? But changing the culture, I know. Uh, again. What, yeah. Only the P is silent. Uh, let's see, uh, and lastly, representative to the Veterans District, uh, our town moderator who is, uh, who has resigned suggests that at least temporarily a member of the select board should attend. Yes. Yes. And I did send out a couple of messages today about that. Somewhere along the line, I guess, it was mentioned and discussed, yes. Who knew? And there were three candidates, and it was suggested that the third candidate, who was not appointed a full member, might wanna be the associate member. That's right. He has a list, and he said to me that he's going to be making appointments. I'm not sure the appointments have been made yet. He's got a long list, he has to winnow it down. I'm finished.
I got something? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I received a calendar from Carol, and I haven't responded to her, but I'm going to look at those dates and how they coincide with what we normally do, and, yes. I hope so. What? I couldn't, uh-oh, uh-oh.